We always start with the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Kennedy, would you start us?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, everybody get a chance to take a look at the regular meeting minutes for December 15th and 29th when you pack it for information purposes only. Okay, moving right along. Communications, like the...I thought somebody's alarm was going off.
It was.
I'd like to introduce our new council member here, Bob Kennedy. Bob's been appointed to finish Chase's term, one-year term. Bob, welcome aboard. Thank you. A little applause. I think you've got applause for a Democrat.
What do you feel, three digits?
I didn't see applause for him. Okay, we do have another duty here that I'm very pleased to be able to announce and perform. We have our...help me if I'm getting this right now, Burl. We have our second female Eagle Scout in Fulton County, and she's very near and dear to your heart, isn't she? Burl, why don't you come on up here, will you? Good to see you. It's good to see you. Would you like to stand right there and introduce your newest Eagle Scout?
Rihanna. This is my daughter Rihanna.
Come on down.
She's like the mayor said, she's the second female in Rochester in Fulton County. She's the third female in North Star District. So, and as of right now in the council, she's also the third.
Wonderful, wonderful. How hard was it?
Not that hard.
Oh, no.
It was really hard.
Well, it's quite an honor to be an Eagle Scout, right, Burl?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I've learned so much about Eagle Scouts since I've come into office because of Burl and you folks having me coming to services and stuff. But I keep going back to Cody Kiefer.
Right.
What has happened with him is the first scout that I recognized, and his grandmother came a few weeks ago, and this was like six years ago when we recognized Cody for his Eagle Scout accomplishment. We've got a nice picture of this little guy, you know, this little girl, but he wasn't all that old. And she said, would you like the picture of him today? Because I've got his little picture there in my office on the wall. And she hands me this picture of him wearing his Marine dress blues.
Right.
And, oh my gosh, it just made you choke up to see that. And I was informed that when you go into the service as an Eagle Scout, you're bumped up one rank and receive extra pay for your Eagle Scout designation.
I'm assuming it's still that way. It was when I went in.
Okay, and there's also special recognition if you're applying to one of the military academies as well. So, you know, this being on your resume is going to be pretty special for your whole life. We've had presidents, astronauts, all sorts of people in history that have become Eagle Scouts, young ladies. So, what a wonderful thing for you, and we are honored to be able to recognize you tonight for this accomplishment. This is a letter of recognition, and it states, "This letter is presented to Eagle Scout Rhanna Keel in honor of her receipt of the Eagle Scout designation and recognition by the Eagle Court of Honor on January 21st, 2023. This recognition is bestowed on her by the mayor of Rochester, Theodore J. Denton, on January 21st at the first city council meeting in 2023. This action will be permanently recorded in Rochester City Council Minutes by the clerk treasurer, Shota Beeler, as so witnessed by the council members. Congratulations, Eagle Scout Keel. Good luck to you and all your future endeavors. Sincerely, Theodore Denton, Mayor of Rochester, Indiana." There's some copies for Denton. Good job. You've done some really good work, Burl. You really have. You've had a whole trail of folks like Rihanna. You've done some good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along into public hearings.
You know what? That was from December.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that looks familiar.
I just realized that. I forgot to remove those. I apologize. We do not have any public hearings.
Okay. Moving right along. Good job, Shota. 24th of January.
I just wanted to surprise you tonight.
We usually have one mistake a year, Shota.
That's it.
Well, she's early. We've got to dance.
We're done, right out of the gate.
Okay, so what we will do is go over to old business, and I see you folks are back with the 5:23 Madison Street update from our December meeting. Who we want to start with, you or Heather?
I'm sorry, 5:25.
Heather, you want to?
Well, I mean, I'll just reiterate what I say. I spoke with Mrs. Barnes the other day. They did talk to the bank, which I'll let her go into a little further detail on that. But they also contacted Crossroads Foundation, kind of company to get the foundation repaired versus getting the house torn down. Obviously, we don't have anything yet. Thirty days was...she has contacted people. It's just a little hard to get a service agreement or anything drawn up within that 30-day timeline, but she is doing her due diligence on our...
And this is a different person than who you were dealing with initially, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to tell us from your perspective what's going on? You've got the mortgage holder now involved.
Yeah, and he doesn't...
He doesn't know what to do.
Wow, okay.
So, he suggests have it torn down. Crossroads did give an estimate of $124,000 for the foundation, and we just received an estimate from Jackson to demolish for 18.5.
Okay. Wow, but that kind of surprises me. The bank, they've got to certainly have a financial interest in the situation.
Not much.
Mayor, I can get a little insight into that. I also spoke with the bank.
Yeah, you were putting together a letter and such.
Yeah, a situation like this where the mortgage holders' total remaining on the debt is pretty modest in value, that it is likely not worth it to them to double down and invest more when they're probably almost fully secure in the value of the empty lot. And they'll risk a small portion of that being an unsecured debt, is my take on it. So, I don't expect...I think the discussion at the last meeting made a lot of sense if the bank were...had more security at risk. They just...I think the total value of what they remain owed is modest enough. There's just not one that they're...
I see.
And that's pretty much what you told me.
Okay. So, what are your plans?
We haven't really signed...we've got another demolition crew coming in later this week for another estimate.
But Jackson said that if David Jackson said that if he is to do it, he won't be able to touch it until March. He said even May, he wouldn't be able to do anything.
First, you have to wait till the land over to the north, get back in town, or get a hold of her. And she's in South Carolina or North Carolina, one or the other, until summer.
This was the complaining lady?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got you now.
Because her fence is right up against our house.
Very close.
It sits there.
Yeah.
Even if we were to redo the basement, the foundation, we have to have permission from her because her...that...where it caved in is right where her property line is.
Heather, any comment on the safety aspect?
I mean, I know it is in dire need of repair. Now, is it going to fall down in the next six months? I don't think so. Now, I was told they had three people come in from this crossroads, and all three people stated this house is not coming down. Like, it's not going to just fall down. It's not going to collapse, and that it's not risking safety to our neighbor nor to our family. That it's been like this for 12 years, and they could tell it's been like that for 12 years.
Yeah, you always want to get something like that in writing.
Right.
Either a formal piece of paper or an email even.
Which we've been keeping in contact. I have messages from today. We're just keeping in contact with him because he's trying to find out other options that might be less costly for us to try to fix that part of the north wall.
This company you're working with, were any of those folks structural engineers?
One of them was a structural engineer from Crossroads that did come in because they...he was the boss of the first...we had Brandon Beeler come in from Crossroads, and then he had his boss, which was a structural engineer, come in.
He needs to give you something in writing, and you know, and he may suggest until the time is right, whether it was or whatever, they do some supporting of some of the area. But he needs to give you something in writing. Counsel? Any questions or anything we've missed? So, you're going to have some kind of a resolution within the next 60 days, you think?
We'll have a decision within, I'd say, 60 days, yes.
Heather, any issue with you? Are continuing this for another 60 days?
No, but if you do decide to have it demolished, it does need to be someone licensed and bonded.
It will be.
Okay, that's just the rules. Jackson does a very good job, and I know they are super busy. There are a couple more. We have a list in the office. We just want to get someone that does it correctly without damaging the neighbors and gets it disposed of properly.
And if the decision is to demolish it, you have my email?
I do.
Okay, would you forward me a copy of the email response from your structural engineer?
Yeah.
We'll put it on record. Does the council have any objections to postponing it for 60 days?
No.
Okay. Will I entertain a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Marty, move to postpone this for 60 days. Seconded by Goodman, those in favor. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for working with me. If you don't have my email address, it's on the website.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, Fedco agreed. David, is that true about tonight?
I didn't know it was on the agenda until I got here today.
Are you here for Lake Manito or Fedco or...
I just haven't been here a while.
You wear about two or three hats.
Yeah, I just haven't been here a while. It's a slow Tuesday. The snow hadn't started yet.
Tiffany asked for the issue to put on the agenda for tonight.
Well, it was...that actually was my thought process because before Tiffany left, she had reached out about the agreement, and then Jillian and I spoke also because now that they are going to be able to move forward with the director, we're trying...we need to try to get something signed so that we can continue forward with whatever the council decides. We just didn't do anything formal yet. The last I knew was council was six months with review. The first item of business was finding an executive director, but there was no change in dollar amount, so that's why I told Jillian, just write it up for the six months. We would talk about it again tonight. Whatever decision you guys make, that way if there's any changes to it, then apparently Jillian is the one in charge at the moment of that paperwork. Or if this is acceptable, then we can sign it tonight and move on. I do have a claim in my office for January's payment, at least so that we stay on schedule with them, we don't fall behind on that. But that was my thought process, was to get back in front of you guys so that we know what we're doing moving forward.
Okay, well, we're on schedule with the $55,000 that's being utilized on a month-to-month basis.
Well, I mean, you're talking 55, that's half of the last year's contract. Is that what you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I believe so.
Okay.
Because I think Jillian just took, yeah, the fixed sum, yes, and she modified it.
So, what do we need to do now?
I...well, I would say we need to actually get on record a vote formally to approve this contract, and then whatever time you guys determine you want to review it for the next half of the year, I would say set that, which meeting you want to discuss that at again, so it doesn't fall off the radar. And then we'll review that prior to that June 30th. So, I don't know if you want to talk about it in May?
Well, I want to go on the record here with some information. Some of the council members weren't around seven years ago when we started down this trail. ED funds are the taxes that are distributed at an earmark from municipalities and county. And the enclosed document that I provided all the one other time is the breakdown that the state does of the economic development distribution. And if you remember, six, seven, seven years ago, I guess now, we discovered that for 25 years, over a million dollars' worth of CEDF funds, a portion of it being the city of Rochester, were being turned over to the county. And 25 years ago, it was the result of the county reaching out to Akron, Kiwanah, Fulton, and Rochester and saying, hey, we're starting an economic development group, calling it Fedco, and we believe there should be one boss for this group, and it makes sense that the monies, the economic development tax, should be distributed from one source. So, at that time, and like I say, we're going back 25 years, everybody signed up for it, the other towns and the city of Rochester. Now, in 25 years, that equated to $7.5 million, and as far as I know, the maximum distribution ever going to Fedco was about $200,000 a year. That leaves a whole heck of a lot of money in an ED fund. When the tax caps were put in place by the state, there was a lot of squealing about how that affected the general funds. So, there was legislation instituted at that time that allowed municipalities and county governments to utilize those ED funds to boost up some of their shortcomings in their general fund. And the county did that for several...until we raised our hand seven years ago and said, we're going to take control of this, take this back, because guess what? We could have been doing the same thing. And those of you who were here, Marty, you were here, and Brian, you were here, and Brian, you were here, know that we passed a resolution that night, and I went right over to the county who was also here and told them we were stopping it and bringing the control back. Now, then, of course, Akron, Kiwanah, and Fulton, they followed suit, and so that, you know, $1 million figure dropped for the county to about $618,000. And again, it's based on population, how much money you get. We get roughly half of that. They get $618,000, we get $321,000. Akron gets $33,000, Fulton gets $6,000, and Kiwanah gets $25,000. Akron, Kiwanah, and Fulton have not participated in the $210,000 distribution because their funds are so light. I kind of let it hit by me seven years ago when we were taking control of the funds back, which should have, or I should have, looked at the distribution compared to our payout. And I think we need to take a hard look at that because these funds are becoming valuable to utilize. As I mentioned in the paper here, we've got grants and stuff for economic development projects that we can use this money for match. And, you know, some of the projects that we can look at are the lead pipe removal project, which we're investigating right now with an engineering firm, the acquisition and drilling of a new well field for our water department. We're going to have to approach that sooner rather than later, stormwater upgrades, the Apache Drive project, the nickel plate trail project, and others. That's an economic development patch that Shota can use those monies for match, and I assume that's what the county has been doing with their overage of economic development funds. Take $200,000 away from that figure of $618,000, that still leaves quite a bit of money. It would...if $55,000 coming out of R321 leaves $266,000 for us to look towards these other things. And that's just my thinking. I don't mind paying our portion, but I think it should be closer to what our fund distribution is. That's my opinion.
we're giving to $55,000?
Yeah, I think we hit it right on the head. We get half as much money as the county, but in the past, we've been expected to make the same contribution. That doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I can understand where you're going with that. I think the problem we run into is that in the budget planning, we had basically committed that if we saw Fedco come through with X, Y, Z, that we would also follow through with the other $55,000 this year. So, I mean, just from a personal perspective, I think ethically it was important to follow through with that if they follow through with their responsibility on their end.
And I understand that. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I would sure hate to make it a continuation, you know? Unless we start getting a whole heck of a lot more CEDF funds.
Yeah, we could definitely revisit that next budget.
And that might allow the reorganization effort at Fedco to get a little breathing room too. I know...correct me if I'm wrong, but one of you, but the consultant said, need to get more private contribution.
We will be looking at all forms of funding.
We were planning a car wash next Sunday. Shota, as I recall, we already...the 55, we already set for the first six, and now the director was the contingency to get the second.
I believe so. I'd have to go look in the minutes to confirm what other...that was the top priority one, and I thought there were a couple of others.
I think it was director, business plan. I don't remember if there was anything else.
I don't know, but there was talk of the housing study. I don't know that that...I think that came after the housing study.
That was in the conversation, that we were working on that.
Yeah.
And then we got that. I think the only check mark we hadn't done was the new director, and he's moving to town Sunday and starts the first.
So, I'm seeing each one of the points that you guys were wanting to see hit, at least right now for this year, I think they've met them, if not, pretty darn close without looking full in the minutes and double checking. So, yes, I believe you're correct. But I think there was still that, we want to do the six months and then have another conversation before we do lease for the next six. But it is budgeted for the full amount. We did do that, just so John could be happy and not have to sit through an additional appropriation.
Yeah, but as far as, like I say, going further, I think it needs to really be looked at because if you think about it, our constituents, our Rochester taxpayers, they're being hit twice, a couple of times. The two to one because of the monies that we're taking from them, the tax monies that are coming from them, makes sense. The one to one does not.
Okay, just... I have no problem revisiting that in the next year, as long as we fulfill the obligations we've committed to.
I do think part of was the new director. You're right. I do think for February, we ought to see him and have a presentation. And I know the county is asking the same thing, I believe. They'd like to get some information.
Yeah, the same as Brian and I came up with you. We talked to the county that same day. So, no, we're anxious to get him here. We're anxious to get him introduced, and like Shota said, we've met all the check marks, and that contract's not signed, we'd be more than happy to pull that one back and do the full year. You know, what I'm hearing is that we've met the obligation for the full year. I don't see reason to have a six-month contract that's not signed. We can redo that and have that back in here tomorrow. I've heard Jillian's in charge.
You need another job, Jillian. You've got all these assignments you're taking on.
All I got to say, Jillian, is welcome to my world.
And I do have to acknowledge, and it was mentioned that Tiffany is no longer with us, and we hate to see that, but including Brian, the whole executive team has really stepped up. Everything is in where it needs to be, and if not, we're working quickly there. And to get Michael on board next week, we are excited to get him out, get him in the community and get him here, get him everywhere we can get him introduced. I've talked to Wes about doing a nice informational on Fedco and the new board, because that was another thing, was getting the new board seated, and the new board is seated. We've met, had orientation in December and our first meeting in January, so thank you for your support.
Okay. Benny, got any questions?
Do you want to revise? Would you rather just sign the full year or do you want to do the six months?
Counsel?
The monies that are in the block, right? I'm sorry. They're now... Yes, during...yes, we went ahead and budgeted for it that way, when it was ready to roll if you guys decided to continue after the six months.
I guess if we're okay for the year, why not just do the year and get it one done? One and done?
Yeah, that's up to you. I would say if you want to put that into a motion...
Revisit, I will make that motion.
Motion by Goodman, seconded by Root.
She motioned.
To just revise the contract and do the whole year. Those in favor?
Okay, get your hand up. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, my book. I found it myself after I got to the office and looked in my folder.
Are you on for the housing study payment?
I am. I just wanted to revisit. I am, I just wanted to revisit because I want to double check. I told Jillian again, since she's wearing an extra hat, I asked her when she sent the invoice over, since we did commit.
We appreciate greatly Jillian.
We do.
More than you know.
We committed the full, to the twenty thousand towards the housing study, but we wanted to break it up, pay ten this year, ten next year. Do you still want to do that or do you want to just pay the twenty and be done? We know it's going to be completed, we know it's going to be done. That was my only question to the council now that they have a director in place and we've got, I mean, things are kind of moving forward. I just wanted to verify.
Well, do you, that didn't have anything to do with having a director in place, that was more for your benefit, for cash flow purposes.
We don't have any issues.
Okay.
So I mean, if you're, I'm, I'll make the motion that we do the twain.
Just be done with it. I mean, that, that makes my staff happy, makes Jillian happy, it's one less thing to have to try to remember in January of next year. If we just go ahead and take care of it and then they, they still have to monitor that.
Okay, Goodman's made the motion to do that, second. Fitzwater's second, those in favor?
There you go Jillian.
Thank you for that too.
You're welcome David. That invoice is done, right? It is. It's like, I actually, I told her this morning, I said, sit tight till after the council meeting, then I'll tell you in the morning what we're doing. But yes, I have it.
So, on the housing study, I hate to interrupt and take a minute, but the steering committee will be those that have been invited in the past to the original housing study meetings? Is that good with everybody? I, I, I think most all of you were invited, so I just want to give you a heads up that, and Bob will, will add you. But if somebody's not good with that, if you'll let Brian know or email me or, I'm monitoring the Fedco email accounts. I just want to make sure, we're turning those over to Ryan that was here when he presented to you guys a few months ago. So the, the blast will be going out. So if you don't want to be part of that steering committee and you were on the email list before, let us know and we'll remove you. Otherwise, you'll be contacted.
You start out with that same group and if some votes want to.
That, that's where I was going, I just wanted to mention it tonight and let Bob know that we'll add you. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Okay, hey, it's a new year everybody, it's time for election officers and the board appointments. Anybody have any issues with the board that they're assigned to? Bob, you're a newbie. And it's the park board, Chase was.
Yeah.
And took animal adoption.
Uh, no, I think, yeah, Wilson had animal adoption. How many animals have you adopted in the last year personally?
All those meetings are heart wrenching.
Okay, your appointments are, if you look down at the bottom of the agenda, you've got area plan, Fedco, redevelopment commission, uh, sorry, park board, VZA, council on aging, solid waste and animal adoption, tree board and EMS and water board. And if y'all want to mix it up, feel free to mix it up. Because Bob might not want to sit on the park board.
Would you like to sit on the park board? I like pickleball, I like swimming, I like the nickel plate trail. But if somebody else wants it, that's fine too. I am the newbie, so. That's what you do for? Well, you got your building.
Oh, it's great. It is, it's good. Well, okay, I, somebody make a motion to retain the board participation as it is?
Some move.
Goodman, seconded by Smith, those in favor, congratulations, you're all the same board. Well, no, seriously, we've done a good job with that, everybody. And the boards all appreciate having you there, they do. And I know it's an extra meeting for everybody and, yeah, time's valuable, but we appreciate what you, what you do there. Okay, we talked about, no, we haven't talked about the area plan invoice.
You need to elect to the council president.
Oh, that's right, the officers. I just thought they'd do the same thing.
Well, maybe, that's fine, I, I kind of need that normal motion.
Anybody have any thoughts on the president for the council? Any nominations?
A nominee, Brian Goodman, second.
Anybody make a motion to close the nominations?
Go move.
Bob was really quick on closing.
Is that all right? You want the park board? You want the park board too?
I'll send those payback.
Congratulations. What about the vice president?
We don't have a vice president. Want to make a vice president?
I almost thought it was Marty.
Marty. He's a guy who reads.
You get stuck reading when he's not here.
Yeah, he's the reader when Goodman's not here, yeah. Okay.
You're welcome Marty.
Thank you.
Did we vote on Brian?
There was a motion in the second, but he didn't press the vote.
He's the only, he's the only one running.
Yeah, it's a tough vote.
Everybody in favor of Brian?
Wow, okay.
Is that a five to one?
Was that a no vote abstaining? Okay, we had six ye and one abstention.
John's not here.
Or I mean, five ye and one abstention. Will we call Jim? Okay, the area plan invoice.
Since you're here, might as well chat. All right, so this year's invoice amount for the interlocal agreement was forty-seven thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents. I did send that over to Shada with all the information along with it. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I looked, looked very similar to last year. There wasn't a jump off with page change or anything.
No, not really. Things pretty, pretty consistent, probably within five, six thousand dollar range difference.
Anybody have any questions for Heather? If not, then I would entertain a motion to pay the bill.
Marty's moved.
Second, a Goodman, those in favor? Okay. Good God, thank you so much for what you do. Javers, I mean, you followed in the footsteps of Casey and I know it's not, it's not the most pleasant job in the world. Especially like you gotta talk to people about a house coming down perhaps or whatever. But I had a nice conversation with Gary the other day, Gary Madlin, one of your inspectors. You've got a good bunch there, Heather, you really do.
We do.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a resolution to look at tonight, it's for a budget transfer. Shada, would you like to explain what you've got there?
Yeah, these are probably more for Bob's benefit than anything, since the rest of you have done this. At the end of each year, we have some of our, with our budget, we have budget classifications Bob. And I have authority to move appropriation balances between budget classification, that's within amount, accounts that are within the same budget classification. I do not have the authority to move appropriation balances between different classifications. So for instance, personnel, we have forty-one, four hundred thousand series, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. Forty-one are personnel items, wages, forty-two are supplies, forty-three are repair maintenance, forty-four capital. So at the end of the year, we have some of our accounts that go over budget for one reason or another. You know, obviously we can't plan for everything throughout the year, we do the best we can. So what this resolution does is it allows me to, because we can't have anything in the red at the end of the year, so everything's got to be in the black. So what I need to do is move appropriation balances from one account to another in order to bring anything that was in the red back into the black, so I can close out the books for the year.
And those of you who've been around a while for Bob's edification on this, we do not do transfers very often. This lady runs a pretty tight ship and, you know, there are some, we have a state board of accounts in here and they go to some places where there are transfers and things done at every meeting. We don't operate that way. She does a good job, but we gotta clean it up at the end of the year.
I mean, we, the guys do, again, we, every year, there's, usually it's repair and maintenance and supplies that, especially just last year with cost just going skyrocketing. The guys come in and I will say, all of our department heads are very diligent and they do, they come in and they, they do one of these, put their hat in their hand, like, I'm sorry. Yeah, hey, some things are out of our control. So that's what this is, is just to approve those transfers so I can clean up the books and close them out for the year.
Bob's in the banking business, he knows, right? Crazy year.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So I get this kind of straight.
And I just realized my alignment was off on this.
So like for, since the park operating fund, let's just, since that one's become near and dear to my heart. Fund, so it's called Fund fifteen, fifteen there.
Correct.
So you really can't move between, like you can't move wages down to pool chemicals, but you have, where you can transfer is the ones that's in the four elevens between wages. So it can go between funds for wages, but it, it's not within the fund, I guess.
No, it is, yeah, it is within the fund. It might be easier. So when we're transferring, so for instance, this account, these accounts here, we're all short. So I was in the red here.
Okay.
These are, are well over what we budgeted, so we have plenty of account appropriation balance. What you will find out with government budgeting is general, you know, the real world.
It's not left and right.
So what we're doing is we're just moving, so we have.
So everything's staying within this, this area here for that money, but you can't take money from here and go up to Fund twelve thirty, yeah?
No, I mean, I, I can, but that's a whole different process to do that. Yes, but that's a different process. So we stay, whenever I, whenever we do this, we stay within the same fund. So we never go outside of the fund unless it is a catastrophic need or we're borrowing money. So we could, in the past, years ago, there were times where the general fund had to borrow from utilities because we just didn't have enough tax revenue to cover the bills. And then come our tax warrant time, once we got our payment from property taxes, we would pay the utilities that, that money that we borrowed. So that, long before my time, that had happened. But no, this is just staying within the same fund and not going between the funds. So the budget, so you and I will have a crash course on government budgeting as well. As your internal controls.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's not left column, right column at all.
Transfunding, purring money out of the mayor's fund again.
You guys have hit the mayor's fund pretty hard.
He actually gave me his credit card, his personal credit card, not city credit card, and said, here, have fun, so.
I mean, what?
Oh, they did, yes you did, you gave it to Karen and told me to take care of it.
I bought lunch, you know. And I didn't get it back, you just don't have a credit.
I don't, you need to talk to Karen.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's a whole difference. Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And then your head will spin when we get that.
So, Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-three, budget transfers for twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any other conversations with Shada on the situation? If not, I would entertain a motion to read Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-three.
By title, by title only.
Wow, nobody ever said you guys. There isn't going to be any novel readers out here, are there? Okay, it's moved. Moved by Wilson, seconded by Goodman, those in favor of reading it by title only? Okay, so be it.
Resolution one dash twenty twenty-three, budget transfers.
Do I have an approval of Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-three, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, Wilson seconded, by Goodman, in favor, okay.
Thank you.
Have fun.
That's all, that's all I have. Other than I do need signatures again because I'm not sure what Ted did with my paperwork.
Throw Ted in the works.
Hey, I tell you, my norris, it's my credit card.
Since you were here Bob, I will skip over you. These were the resolutions that we passed for, the pilot. And they were all signed and I, I hope you guys re-sign those if you would please.
Does he need to sign Chase's or not?
No, just skip over Chase.
Okay. We're a little light on our superintendents tonight, you know, as I was telling Councilman Fitzwater, seven years ago, we took away the fact that the department never, who goes over and works with another department. We're all departmentalized. We're all activated now, we don't do that, so we're all activated now for snow work tomorrow. It hits, we'll be all hands on deck, so they're getting a little rest tonight. As they're saying about, you know, midnight we'll start seeing some activity. So that's where the superintendent, I actually have one who's.
You two won't have any.
All the ones that matter.
Yeah, all, all, all the real important ones.
You guys look well.
You know, until we start slapping a, a snow blade on a, on a police car.
Yeah, Abby's probably going to be here at the meetings. We'll just follow the fire trucks.
Oh, yeah. There, you get thrown under the bus.
We'll be parking first fucking donuts.
No, the chiefs are the chiefs, there, there are staples that are always here. Chief Butler, would you like to leave off please?
Sure, for the month of December, structure fires four in the city, mutual aid fires three Henry Township, auto fire alarms, three in the city, two in Rochester Township, vehicle fires, one in Rochester Township, electrical fires, one in the city, brush grass fires, one in Rochester Township, calls for smoke, one in Rochester Township, accidents, one in the city, two in Richland Township, eight in Rochester Township, medical assists, nineteen in the city, eleven in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, lymph assist, one in Rochester Township, CO check, one in Rochester Township, Gas Lake, one in the city, animal rescues, two in the city, search for missing person, one in Rochester Township, council calls, two in Henry Township, one in Newcastle, one in the city, one in Union Township. That should add up to a total of sixty-nine calls. We conducted one drill, it was CPR training, our annual training. And just so you know, for the year total, we had five, or seven hundred and fifty-six calls. In twenty-one, we had seven oh two, in twenty, we had six thirteen, in nineteen, we had six twenty-eight, and in two thousand and eighteen, we had five fifty-six. Five, sixty-five, I'm sorry, so pending your questions, that concludes my report.
You want to, you have anything to comment about the EMS meeting the other day that you attended?
I was optimistic that they're going to go and do their due diligence to, to talk to the, the people that have skinned the game for, for the county and come up with some guidance to guide the, the county officials on, on what direction we need to go for, for the EMS. In regard to what Lutheran, they still have three years of the contract. And right now, I don't think the county is paying anything for the emergency services that are being provided. We are down to two ambulances, but I think all this will come out with, with the study from, from Mr. Ritter and Associates and, and getting the information and, and providing an adequate report to the county.
Yeah, I, you know, it was, it was an impressive meeting, I think they know what they're doing, the, the Ritter folks. They've certainly done this a few times. One thing that was stated as was, you know, we can't tell you how to do it. We can't tell you, you know, where you're going to get the money or what you're going to come up with to pay for this. We can only tell you what we believe to cover your area, you should have what's appropriate. So they may come back and tell us Lutheran had pretty good coverage and they need to strive to continue in that mode, but they wanted to make it perfectly clear, these things aren't cheap. Money has to come up from someplace. And, you know, a couple of questions were, why Lutheran take this on? You know, umpteen years ago, county was losing money by the bucket for. And they made an explanation that there are, you know, there are different buckets for service that to some of them are more profitable than others. Obviously, if it's an insurance job, it's going to be probably a profitable situation. But if it's Medicare, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, that's not going to be very profitable. You may think you should, in, in the private sector, you may think it's a six thousand dollar bill and when Medicare gets done with it, it's six hundred. dollar bill, and when Medicare gets done with it, it's six hundred. So, you know, what they they've come, they've got a lot of knowledge now on our demographics of the area, and there's a lot of Medicare out there. So Tom and I have a meeting on February the fourteenth with Mr. Ritter, Barry.
Correct.
And we're going to sit down and let him know what we know and talk about some things. So they're going to get out and get their due diligence done. Anything else, Tom?
Not this time.
Okay.
I I will be meeting, I guess, one alibi, we'll be meeting this week, Friday, with the eighth grade health teacher to set up our hands-only CPR for the eighth grade health class, so.
Yeah, I.
Be moving forward with that.
I was remiss in not commenting about that, too, last Monday, several of us had training out at the fire station on CPR, AED, and a good, good, comprehensive first aid course, but what was Amy's last name? I never did catch her last name, no?
If you didn't ask me, I could tell you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Senior moment.
Yeah, Lutheran EMS, very, very, very knowledgeable, you know.
Yeah, you were the first class, so there was firemen and other EMS people in the back, so that that course was too full, it was to get all our city employees CPR certified and first aid skills, but we we have a full complement now of new CPR instructors at I M One, so BLS CPR instructor, so now we can go ahead and teach without calling Lutheran, so we've just kind of filled our complement, too, as as well with another skill set we can provide the community as well.
Well, Jake participated, the he's the supervisor.
Both both departments worked together, so.
For Lutheran, he was he was participating, there were three EMS folks that, you know, they're on those blue buses every day, they participated as well, and that was as good for me as the training in interfacing with these folks and hearing what they'd had to say about the EMS world. Those of us who don't participate in that world on a daily basis, our perception of EMS is MeTV and Rampart Fifty-One, you know? I know, you know, some of you don't know what that is, but hey, it is entirely different, you know? The statement was made, and after showing us some things and going over some stories and such, I believe it, when you need one of those folks, one of those little blue buses, they're bringing the emergency room to you. Now, I don't know all about this, it's not throw them in the in the bus and go, they're working on you, and they've been in contact with the hospital, they can do about anything from that bus. So I asked the one gentleman who was pretty, very knowledgeable, and it seemed like he'd been on several runs in his tenure, I said, just last year, how many lives do you think you saved? And he had a great answer, he said, well, first of all, he said, I've never saved a life, this is God. I said, well, yeah, I, you know, I did that, I understand that, but God works through you. How many lives do you think you saved? And he said, lots, lots. So, you know, my take on this is we need to figure out how we can make this happen. This is just something we've got to have. So anyway, it was a very, very enlightening day, and Tom, I appreciate you putting that whole thing together, that worked very well. Now we all know how to use an AED also, so we're as, maybe not as sharp, but we're getting close to Jake Freeman, you know? So.
Mayor, I would report that Chief Butler presented a program at Kiwanis last Wednesday afternoon and did a great job demonstrating the CPR machine that they carry.
Lucas device.
Okay.
He just did a really nice job last week, so.
Well, you know, and one impressive, you and I, you know, we took first aid in school and all this good stuff and CPR, you know, they don't even do mouth-to-mouth anymore, they've eliminated that. So there've been a whole lot of.
Wait, what?
They don't do mouth-to-mouth, yeah, I'm telling you, well, we want you to be aware of that, okay? No, no. Do you think that we're we're picking on you but not giving you mouth-to-mouth? No, 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 we've been told not to. Okay, now, Chief Shotz.
You've got a lot of information in front of you, I'm just going to go over most of it briefly. For the month of December, we had twenty accidents, thirteen toll of warnings, forty-seven offenses, forty-three case reports, four hundred and nineteen calls for service, thirty-five lockouts, four towed vehicles, and twenty-four people incarcerated. And then for the year-end tolls, I'll just skim through this, two hundred and forty-three accidents, three hundred and ninety-one warnings, five hundred and sixty-seven offenses, four hundred and fifty-eight case reports, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight calls for service, three hundred and thirty-seven lockouts, two hundred and thirty-two people incarcerated. And then the next page is the crimes individuals were lodged for for the month of December. Bob, just so you understand how I do this, if someone gets lodged, if we arrest somebody and put them in jail for, say, public intoxication and disorderly conduct, I will put both of those on the sheet, just so you kind of have an idea of what kind of crimes that we're seeing. So that doesn't mean, these, for the month of December, we lodged twenty-four people, if you add these up, it's going to be more than twenty-four, but that's why, if somebody gets lodged for two different charges, I'll put both of them on there. And then you have the the yearly stats and how they compare to the previous four years, don't ask me to make sense of them because I can't, they go up and down and up and down. We did have, we were essentially down three officers last year, we hired Brady Briggs, Bryce Michael, and Catherine Dively, Catherine's still in the training, Bryce just got out of the academy, Brady graduated in the summer, so we were shorthanded, I know that's been reflecting the numbers being a little lower than what, excuse me, than normal. Bob, and then you have the the crimes people lodged for for the entire year and how they compare to twenty twenty-one. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
I'd so note that those three hundred and thirty-seven lockouts, one of those I participated in on New Year's Eve, I got to unlock that, help unlock that vehicle, so we're lucky we don't have a broken window to get in. You guys have never experienced that, that's an interesting sit- situation, too. Rode on New Year's Eve, as I always do, and we had some good, good officers, Catherine is doing great, she's, she's really taken to it.
Yep.
She made, she told me, she said it's something she's wanted to do, basically for a lifetime.
Yep.
You had a good choice there, Chief.
I think so.
Any questions for the chief? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on down to the reports of the committees. Harry's not here, David, anything on Lake Manitowoc?
We have all of our dates for our different events established, those will be coming out in the next news letter.
I know I got the do's notification, how you doing, are you getting people to respond to the?
We do, we do, we, we've gotten people on a much better rotation, where it used to be spread up year, we're getting a majority now in the first quarter, which obviously really helps.
That helps, yeah.
So.
Any questions for David? Area Plan Commission group?
Well, I I didn't go, yeah, I I was fully.
Are you looking for a different board?
No, no, but I was fully intended to, seven o'clock works very well usually, but all of a sudden, I was like, oh, golly, that kind of got in the way.
Heather, you have anything you'd like to share with us?
We just had a zone map amendment petition last night for inside the town of Fulton, they wanted to rezone it to commercial for a retail store, just looking to come in, so that'll be a nice addition for Fulton if that happens.
I heard through the grapevine, you had a radio antenna approved.
We did.
Yeah.
That was a BZA earlier in month.
We had the Christian radio station here pretty soon.
Yeah, we did, we had a full house for that one, too. But while you're on the Plan Commission, I do have my end-of-the-year report. So our total permits that were issued in twenty-two was seven hundred and sixty-eight, which was down from nine hundred and forty-one in twenty twenty-one. Our total fees we brought in was eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents, and then in twenty-one, we brought in one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. So we're down a little bit, I think twenty-one interest rates were low, and money was coming in from the COVID relief funds, and people were building like crazy.
Have we had any thought of increasing the electrical fee, ten bucks, it's cheap?
Actually, we are looking to do an amendment to the building ordinance, which I was going to bring, so this is my turn. We would like to amend the building ordinance to require general contractors and subcontractors to also be registered and bonded, so in turn, every legislative body would have to approve that into the building ordinance. We're having a lot of issues with shoddy construction or just taking the money and running. I don't know if you guys have gotten many calls, but I know the county sheriff has gotten calls, so it kind of gets torn in the middle on who to throw it back to. And for our ordinance now, we can't, we don't have the authority to fine the contractor themselves, we can put a stop-work order on them, but in turn, that will go to the property owner versus the contractor. So fees will go along with that. City of Rochester is the only ones that require plumbing and electricians to get registered, so you guys have that authority to raise those fees if that's what you would like to do. It's in the process of amending, but I am drafting up an ordinance to kind of see what everybody thinks, you know, not everybody has to take it, I know the county was very interested in it, it'll at least kind of eliminate our issue of, for our latest issue, Gary went out, did an inspection, the construction was terrible, the gentleman had to tear down his pole barn and start over.
Oh, wow.
And he lost thirteen thousand dollars from the contractor that did it, so there wasn't anything other than putting a stop-work order on it that we could help him with. So at least we have them registered and insured and bonded, the homeowner will have a little reassurance of, which I know they should do their homework themselves, but kind of helps us in the process in the office. So that's something I'll be drafting up in the next couple of months to present to all the legislative bodies.
Well, when you say you're going to be drafting something up, is that going to include adding some restrictions that you don't have now, or some more authority that you could utilize?
It'll be, it'll be more authority towards the general contractor, so so we can actually fine the contractor versus the fines going straight to the property owner.
Okay.
And then there will be a fee associated with that that we'll be discussing for the registration fee. Now, if you guys want your fees to go up, I kind of want, if everyone's going to take it, I kind of want them all to stay the same, it's a lot easier, so if you want your ten dollars to go up to, you know, a different amount, then I will put that in my draft ordinance as well to keep them all the same.
Well, I, you know, we don't, we don't have that knowledge of what's being done around us or anything.
Sure.
You do, and you could get some information and, you know, email it to me or something, or we're going to, or to Attorney Perkins?
If I may interject, actually, if I may interject, I do have, because of my colleagues and our financial advisors, they have been.
Okay, yeah.
We, I've been talking to Eric for several years about looking at our funds and our electrical fees and things like that, our permit fees, we are way overdue, I've mentioned it before, of revisiting what we charge for all of our things. So if she's in the process of going to be doing amendments, I think I will get ahold of Tyler and Eric and ask them to pull something together for us, because we do need to increase those fees.
Yeah, I mean, ten dollars, electrician pays more than that for his screwdriver.
Some of those around the counties charge twenty-five for subcontractors and then fifty dollars for general contractor, and that's kind of what we were looking at.
Yeah.
So it would go up from ten to twenty-five.
Well, that's that's the other thing, we're not going to take it up a huge amount right away.
Right, it's just yearly, you know, it's twenty-five dollars, right now it's ten dollars a year, but so we've looked at twenty-five dollars for the subcontractors, and that would include all plumbing, electrical, heating, cooling, and site threat, so that would be a subcontractor, anything else would be a general.
Okay.
I think it will help alleviate some of the problems, not all of them, I mean, people sign contracts, so they should probably read them a little better, but if they're on file as a, know they have insurance and bonding, that will help.
Do they entertain? Fees per year or per job?
For us, it's per year, they have to show us proof of insurance and then pay, right now, it's a ten-dollar registration fee, so anybody in the city of Rochester that does electric and plumbing has to be registered, or we won't do any inspections, but the city's the only one that requires that, no one else requires that right now. So, yeah, I can look at the fees, too, and he said I'll be drafting, I really liked Cass County, so I took a lot of their information. Marshall County was, I thought their fees were a little high, so so I really like Cass County language, so we're kind of drafting it in our own.
Attorney Perkins, you're the area plan commission attorney, aren't you? Okay. Don't don't keep him out, don't keep him out in the dark, you know, help you out with it.
He's heard this spiel four times now, so.
Really? Okay, all right.
Okay, so I won't reveng him yet. So I'll look into changing those fees and for everyone, and I want to talk to Gil Shota, and it'll be a couple of months before everything gets drafted.
Sure, sure.
So I still need to talk to Akron and Fulton and Kiwanah, well, Kiwanah doesn't have our code, so Akron and Fulton.
Well, again, thank you, it's all necessary stuff, I mean, my heart goes out to the guy who had to tear down his barn, but what is it, buyer beware?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, it was just terrible, terrible construction.
Okay, Vetco, Brian, anything else to?
Yeah, in recent news, Vetco was fully funded for this year. We, right away, what David said, Tiffany did turn in her notice in her last day, I can't, it seemed so fast, it was Friday, the executive committee has taken the reins or filling all the gaps, expecting Michael, no later than February one, as soon as he gets in, we'll start getting him around to come meet with you, Ted, and, you know, come before the council on county as well. Other than that, you know, our projects are continuing, you know, we're keeping everything in the air, and, you know, we're abusing Gillian horribly, she's helping us man, you know, man the office and field calls and stuff, so we're just waiting for our director to get there.
Okay, any questions for Goodman? All right, Redevelopment Commission, we were supposed to meet tomorrow, we've called off for tomorrow because we think we're going to be pretty challenged in the morning. We are actively moving the Apache Drive project and Nickel Plate Trail project ahead. Had a meeting this past week with USI Engineering Firm and Dr. Hoff, we go to the Apache Drive project, and the Ts are pretty well across, and Heather involved in a couple of issues with some setbacks out there and such, and they're going to make that retention on full, fully usable for any development or anything that comes up, not just for the road, so I've tried to be proactive on all of that. The county has been having meetings over their portion of the project, and again, this is a ready grant project, and hopefully we're going to hit a million dollars to look towards this project. The county's working on the sidewalk on Highway Fourteen, and now they're discussing the lighting aspect of it. We were having a meeting for the Apache Drive and Peachtree Drive area with Duke in the next week to get a lighting design put together, again, LED lightings, as we have throughout our our community. So it's, those those things are moving right along, and then yesterday, I had a meeting with Charlie Sparks, if you all remember Charlie, we've been talking with Charlie for about a year, he and his wife moved to our community about a year. His wife moved to our community about a year ago, live on Lake Manitowoc. Charlie is the former Economic Development Director for Howard, Cocomo, basically. Charlie's fingerprints are all over the Korean battery factory that's going in in 2024. He got those folks, so, working through Chrysler and the Koreans to come to Cocomo. We had some very good discussions. He is no longer employed as an employee of Howard County, so he's in contract work and he's still, they're, they're still hanging on to him like this because as you can imagine, this, this project's huge. So he's still doing some work there, but he wants to start working with our Redevelopment Commission as well, as does Cheryl Morphew. If you remember Cheryl from Prowfordsville, she still communicates with us and keeps us apprised of some things. She just enlightened us to a program the state started that we're reaching into to see if we can get some benefit for it. It's called Make My Move. That's, Amy, you may have heard of Make My Move. It's a project that we're seeing if it would fit for us to entice, you know, through the COVID program, a lot of folks ended up working from home. A lot of them who have the ability to live somewhere else as long as they can still work from home. So it's a program where different cities are getting involved in enticing some folks like that to move to their community. You know, you're, you have a list of criteria. You obviously, you know, want folks to meet, and some of, one of the things is a high income. So we're looking into that. We're also looking at any of the possibilities, some spillover from the battery plant supplier wise, what have you. We got, we got quite a few things on the Redevelopment Commission plate. And that's about all I have for that. Any, any questions? Project Board is still working. We got, you know, we ended up with 16 projects last year and 11 of them we were able to take, offer to the board by the end of the year. So we've had some carryover and added half a dozen more to it. You heard me mention a couple of things that we're going to study. We're trying to be proactive. We're doing a study for lead line removal, a water line removal. All communities have them, it's just how many and where. And our, you know, in the past, it's if we've gone across the lawn, we'd replace it. Well, now we have the tools available, geotechnology and everything, and our mapping process and everything to get some people to help us locate these things. If we have them, we don't know that we have a lot, but we're going to, we're going to do the research. There's some grant money available that we're going to utilize. We've also been working now a little over a year on establishing another well field for our water department for expansion purposes. You know, our well field's over 100 years old. And, you know, they would say, ah, you know, well, five and six haven't, they haven't been doing all that well. So we got five wells and a couple of them are, they've blintzed a little. So we're trying to be proactive, find another aquifer and get that backed up without having to build another water plant or something down the road. So we're trying to get proactive there. And there's some, some grant monies that are available to help with that. So, you know, there, there are some new projects on the board, and we just keep moving the ball forward. That's why I said, you know, economic development monies, we can always use it. There's, there's money available out there, but it never comes without a match or some. And it drives you out of nuts. Where are we going to get that match money? Where are we going to come up with it? But thank God you always do.
You're welcome.
Did you catch how she said that? Okay.
I did have to, I did have to stop you on one project.
You did on one project. And so, yeah, Alan, if, if you remember, you know, we had a million dollar grant from the NDOT folks, the Community Crossing Grant last year to do the Main Street project. Holy mackerel. Again, Bob, COVID, we went out for the bids and they came back twice what our engineering estimate was. Well, you can't do it, you know? So we actually sent that grant back and they said, well, you know, when you guys get ready to look at doing it again, let us know and we'll, you know, we can't guarantee you, but we'll put you up there somewhere where you're not at the bottom of the list. And, and we were told by our financial advisor, Eric Walsh Baker, and telling, hey, be surprised how many people are looking at those things now and saying, we can't do it this year. We're giving it back. Because they won't give you any more money. You still have to make do with what, what you get. So we'll be, we're going to look at that again this year, but it's like Shada said, a million dollars? You need 200,000 to match it.
Correct.
Yeah, 80, 20. So.
But I still don't think they're going to come in. I, I, I don't think.
You don't think we're going to?
They're going to come in.
Yeah.
I do not. I mean, I, I still think we're facing a challenge that we're not going to be able to afford it, but.
The guy that was here just a little while ago, Figley, oh, he says we're, we're heading for a recession. He's, he's not believing all this from what he sees with his suppliers and everything. So I don't know if you adhere to that or not, but it's, it's not, it's not well out there yet. So we'll look at it, but probably won't be moving into it till it gets down into a realistic figure. We just finished up the waste treatment plant project, about $8 million. Took just, just under two years to complete that. And if we had to do that today, you know, we ended up, we got, as you know, we got a loan from the state revolving fund folks a couple of years ago, like 1.5%. We probably would be somewhere around, what, 5% today?
45 if we had to do it today.
Yeah. So it's a different world. We have to be plenty careful with our monies. Any questions? Chase Thompson, Park Board, Shada?
I apologize. I did, Andy pointed that out to me that I missed. I apologize, you know, the new Chase.
We didn't know there was going to be a sign to me.
Well, this is true. It was not assigned against me.
Somebody write down 2024 was mistaken. We'll let you have a carryover.
Well, technically, it might not have been Chase because you already, you know, you could have shut the thing up, so it's.
Mistake all the same page, so she can count it as one. You guys are getting a little taste of my life. Okay, yeah, the Park Board, they met and it was kind of a short meeting. Their discussion pretty much was based on what's going on at the swimming pool. Again, we're trying to be proactive. We've got a swimming pool that's 60 some years old, maybe older, and it's, it's neat and stuff. As we've talked before, it's neat and a lot of things. And we're starting, we're starting on it. We've already started on it. We've got a, a new filter system that has come in that we have just waiting to, to put in when the weather gets better, but we're doing it piece at a time. And so that we can continue to operate the pool and not go into a huge debt situation just to get the pool revamped. So the things that we, we, we don't have a lot of time to replace, we're working on getting done first. And that's what the evaluation of that entails and the plan. And Dwayne is in charge of that, works with the mayor on that, and then we go to the Park Board and say, you know, here's what we'd like to do. We'd like to see if your money, if you can make it happen. And that's another thing. Don't feel like the Lone Ranger down there. The Park Board, it's nothing for the Park Board folks to check with Shada and say, hey, explain, can we take money here to do this and such? And they've been great in working through that. They've done a lot at the golf course. We took a $300,000 losing situation there and whisped chains and squished the knobs and such. We've cut that way down, that loss. So they do some good stuff, but, you know, they're not always masters of the numbers. They have to ask Shada for advice once in a while.
Every now and then.
Every now and then, like every minute. No, they do pretty good.
I give them a report.
Shelley, Shelley Coles is getting quite handy with the numbers. She really is.
She is very good.
And of course, Alex Berlin is on that board. Alex, Vice President out there at Rochester Homes, he gets it, very, very sharp on it. And Mitch Hayes, Mitch has been around and understands the numbers and situation. And then the president is Kay Davis. I think you've met Kay. Former retired CEO from Advanced Magnetics. See, you couldn't have sharper people. They're, they're, they're good. It's a good board. Okay, Rochester BZ and Council on Aging, Marty?
Well, the BZA meeting scheduled for tomorrow night has been canceled for lack of activity, so no meeting there tomorrow. The Council on Aging met yesterday. Speaking of good boards, that board is really improved over the last few years, very active board. We are, we have reached out to a prospective new board member and may have that to report next month. Council, the transpo is doing very well, still averaging over 100 trips a day.
Oh, my gosh.
And as far as drivers and vehicles are concerned, really in good shape. They are putting together a survey to maybe look at expanding the hours. That is yet to be determined. Our SVP Ann could not be there yesterday, so we didn't have a report from her. As far as Council on Aging is concerned, we established, well, we reelected officers yesterday, but established a committee to look at the policy handbook and are going to review that before the February meeting. And on a happy note, anybody would be invited on February 6th, and I apologize, I forget the lady's name, but a regular at the council is turning 100 on February 6th, and there'll be a birthday party for her about 11:30.
11:30?
Yeah.
Will you, will you provide me with the name?
I will, yeah. I sure will. I just didn't write it down yesterday and I don't recall.
Amy, do you?
I, I've just talked about today. It's Ocelia, O-C-E-L-I-A. No last name, it was on the flyer.
O-C-E-L-I-A.
And they had said that the event, I think, starts at 9:00 a.m.
Very good, Marty.
Sorry, I talked to Doug today about the same.
Marty and I will be eating the stale cake. 9:00 a.m., okay.
Sorry.
That's not what they said yesterday.
Well, I don't know, Doug, I have to meet with him today.
It makes sense to me.
I love it, even if you're wrong, I love it.
I think she's probably right.
I'm as right as what's in my planner today, so.
That's her lunch hour, so.
Okay, well, that, that does make some sense. You're right. Ocelia. Ocelia.
That's my report.
Any questions for Councilman Smith? Okay, Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center?
Yes, unfortunately, they moved the meetings to a different day. I was unable to attend because I had prior commitments, so.
You're looking, you're looking more and more like a Park Board.
We are sitting in the same area.
Yeah, you are. You just flip your seats there. Yeah, okay. Okay, Tree Board, Brian?
Tree Board did not meet, but the members are communicating through emails and everything else to make sure they don't get left behind. So in terms of replacement of trees or anything like that, they're keeping up on it, but.
I don't know if they're sending you the emails on the, on the sidewalk grant project, federal grant project.
I think I got, I seen some of them.
There's been the surveying and everything done above for the $600,000, $700,000 worth of sidewalks going in. There's a number of trees that are coming in. So they're trying to keep the Tree Board apprised of that.
Yeah, I know they're keeping with the, making the changes on the tree inventory. So they, they know what you, tree goes out, this intersection, wherever it is, comes out, goes off the inventory and a new one goes in somewhere, they'll add that.
Yeah, John Bowers is doing a great job with that. He is, he, between he and Eric, Eric Bidding, they're, they're keeping a pretty good tab on that, and that's a good thing with, you know, we, we received a grant from the DNR to get this software and have this survey done of all the trees in town so that, you know, that oak tree that's out in front of your place is now on our computer and it's been evaluated, so. But it's, it's a dynamic tool, as you can imagine. If you're not keeping up with it, it's, it's worth the salt. They work with Dwayne Border and John and Eric and Jim Mulligan do a pretty good job at checking trees periodically and updating the tree inventory, so. And, and we utilize that tree inventory for some of them we earmark to take out. We've got two avenues, well, we've got three avenues. We've got folks who come in and want a tree evaluated that's in front of their house, form's filled out, and that's evaluated for removal. We have the tree inventory, which all those trees have been evaluated and we periodically make our list and take some of those out. And then we have the emergency list that the street department is involved with to get them out. There's quite a bit when you're a tree city. Now let's talk about leaves. There's quite a bit when you're a tree city. Anything else, Brian?
Not the Tree Board. EMS, I was not able to attend the meeting, but Chief Butler already gave you information as to what, what happened there.
Yeah, there were about 40 people there, weren't there?
Good attendance.
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Brian? Okay, John's not here. Water Board, again, I kind of enlightened you on a couple of things, the Water Board, Water Board is involved in right now in a proactive approach to our water situation. Any legal issues? Tony Perkins?
Yeah, been working with you on some of the redevelopment stuff and with Heather on, on this and some other property issues, but nothing we haven't already discussed.
We're going to keep you challenged, you know? Any ADA issues?
None that came across my desk. Yeah.
Not any, yeah. Just an update on Putz's building. That continues to the structural engineers and through it evaluated the situation. There's a plan and there's a contractor involved in that. They're, they're moving forward with that, probably will be, if they haven't already, will be coming to see you.
Not yet, but, okay.
Okay, do I have any other business? Dragging it out, all right?
So, so, or adjourned.